Blackham, who will then lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Because of the events that have happened this week, I've kind of changed what I was going to do tonight. But I would feel remiss if I did not talk a little bit about Sergeant Lee Sorensen and Officer Eric Estrada, who paid the ultimate sacrifice to protect their community, a community so much like the one we have here. You know, we keep thinking that our state is getting so big and distant and we don't know what's going on and we don't know the people around us. But I can tell you that every time something like this happens, it surprises you and shocks you how close we are in Utah. I work with a gentleman whose wife actually works for the Box Elder County Attorney's Office, you know, and I can bet, looking out here in the audience, that half of you probably knew them or had been in a class with them or known something about them or somebody who did know them. It's a terrible, terrible thing that that's what they had, that sacrifice they had to make and their families. But it sometimes brings us closer together as communities. I don't like to come together closer as communities like that, but it does and it lets us understand and it shows us how much we do appreciate what you do. And on a night like tonight when we're going to swear in three officers, it's such a... It's the both sides of it. But as talking to Chief Ellington over there, you can't hide from it. You have to know it's there, it's always there and it can happen. But I would feel remiss if we did not recognize them tonight and their families and the sacrifices that they made. And if you would, I would ask you to join me in a 30-second moment of silence. Thank you, appreciate that. Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful for all the many blessings that we receive each and every day. Please have a special blessing on our Kaseville officers, that they may be able to carry out their duties and our firefighters in a safe way so that they may be able to go home each and every night. And please, let's have a special blessing for the families of these two fallen officers, that they are able to deal with the sorrow and the adjustments and the grief that they are going to have to go through and move on. We ask for these special blessings tonight and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Now, if you will repeat with me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Blackham, thank you. That was really nice. Okay, we have a lot of officers here tonight and this is really exciting and special for us to be able to present three new officers. I'll invite Chief Horberg to come up and...
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the time tonight to introduce three new officers we're going to swear in tonight. We'll start off with Officer Kristen Banks, if I can have her come up. Just a little bit about Officer Banks. We hired her in April, she just finished her FTO August 1st. She came to us from the North Salt Lake Police Department where she worked for about two years. She's got her husband Rusty here, who's going to pin her badge on. She also has three adult children and one grandchild. Do you want to say anything?
Okay, repeat after me. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kristen Banks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
To perform my duties as a police officer.
To perform my duties as a police officer.
For Kaseville City.
For Kaseville City.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
With honesty.
With honesty.
Integrity.
Integrity.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
Congratulations.
And then if we can get any of your family that wants to come up for a photo, I'd appreciate that.
Congratulations.
And then if I can have Parker Brower come up. So Officer Brower, we hired him out of the Salt Lake County Jail where he worked for about a year and a half before going to the Davis County Jail, where he worked just for a few months before we hired him. He'd been already through part of the police academy, but we had to send him through the rest. He did a great job there. And this is about, is this your first week on FTO?
Yes.
First week on FTO, so he's got about another 12 to go. Doing a great job so far. He's got some of his family here and his girlfriend, Maren, is going to pin his badge on. So if you'll face the secret code.
Raise your right hand. If you don't, I state your name.
I, Parker Brower.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
To perform my duties.
To perform my duties.
As a police officer for Kaseville City.
As a police officer for Kaseville City.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
With honesty.
With honesty.
Integrity.
Integrity.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
Congratulations.
And then if any of Parker's family wants to come up for a photograph. And then if I could have Chandler Cessna come up. Don't be shy. You might recognize the last name from our fire department. So this is, his brother works for Kaseville Fire and from what I hear, does a great job there. So we're hopeful that some of that's rubbed off here. But like Parker, we hired Chandler out of the jail. He worked at the Weber County Jail for about two years. He went to post with Parker. So he just graduated about two weeks ago and this is his first week on FTO. We just got done tasing and pepper spraying these two last week. So we're getting him all indoctrinated. He's got some family, I think his uncle Jeff is going to pin his badge on. If you'd like to come up, Jeff? And if you'd face the secret recorder.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Chandler Cessna.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
To perform my duties.
To perform my duties.
As a police officer for Kaseville City.
As a police officer for Kaseville City.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
With honesty.
With honesty.
Integrity.
Integrity.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
Congratulations.
And if Chandler's family would like to come up, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then if I could get all three officers to come up one more time.
Congratulations.
Let's all step forward a little bit.
Yeah.
You've got to hide this.
Yes, we have to hide it.
Oh, the table.
I expect some good video between you and your brother.
Thank you so much, this is exciting. Chandler was telling me that he and his brother, he wanted to be a firefighter and his brother wanted to be a police officer and so then they traded. So it's pretty awesome to have family members here. So thanks, everybody, for being here, thanks, families. You are welcome to leave, unless you want to stay, but feel free to leave if you'd like. We'll just move on with our meeting. Yeah. We love an audience, but we get it. Just by way of note, no one signed up to speak during Call to the Public and so that's why we skipped past that this morning, or this evening. Okay, council, any conflicts of interest as we move forward? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion on consent item, which is item number five?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent item.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hunt.
Hi.
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 Okay, sounds great, thank you. The work item here is a discussion on cemetery classification-related fee adjustments. Who's going to kick this off, Cole?
I'm not sure if you have any slides or any, it's just kind of blank. So back in February, we made some changes to the cemetery, city code Title 12, Chapter 3, which is our cemetery, which eliminated the ability for non-residents to purchase at-needs spaces in the cemetery. We've been asked just to bring this back, just to, for some discussion, to see if there's any desire from the council to make any changes. And so what we kind of submitted in the work packet was just basically three options that we've kind of come up with, we've explored other cities, what they do, talked to some other private mortuaries, funeral companies, to get some prices so we kind of know where we're at. So the first option is just to remain where we're at, our current policies, status quo, not change anything. We've been doing it for six months and there are... What's the correct word? There's been some...
Inquiries?
Inquiries, yeah, that's a good word.
Okay.
Of our policy and why, and when we explain the reasons why, people understand or for the most part, very accepting of that. Option two, there's been a scenario where Farmington City to the south of us does... They don't sell to non-residents either, neither does Centerville City and other cities are looking to do the same thing. Center, or Farmington City does do a carve-out for former residents. In our view, that becomes a little complicated. What is the length of a former resident? Is it five years, 10 years, six months? Farmington just arbitrarily just picked kind of a 10-year number that they use for their former residents. But they don't do anything for non-residents. It's either you're a resident or you're a former resident. And then the third option is to kind of go back to our previous policy where we do allow a non-resident to purchase a space, the burial right. I need to clarify that when they're not actually purchasing the space, they're purchasing the right to be buried in that space. So the city still owns the land, owns all that stuff. So they're basically just purchasing the right to be buried in that space. And so with that, we would go back to how it was before. But then the fee, as you've looked at kind of a proposed fee, that fee, what we're trying to do there is mimic what specifically maybe Leighton Lindquist does, who's a private cemetery. And there are fees, if you went in there right now and wanted to be buried in Leighton City in their upright section, which our city is, our cemetery is all uprights in the headstones. It'd cost you roughly $8,000 for that interment, the opening, closing costs and then the perpetual care. And so the fee proposed with option three would be about $400 above their fee. So it'd be about $8,400. That does allow people the option to choose Kaseville if that's what they choose. Our overall objective and everything that we're trying to do is just to protect the life of the cemetery for as long as we possibly can. Because we're limited on space, we're limited on the number of spaces that we do have to sell. And so we just want to always make sure that the residents of Kaseville are the ones that we're trying to protect and make that available for them in years and decades to come. And so we're just here to have a discussion to see what the appetite is for any of these options and then the staff are willing to... Jackie, our cemetery section, her daughter had a soccer game, so she was going to try to make it. But I'll just, so Jackie is the interface with our department as far as the families that are grieving come in. And so she's the interface with all of that and she has a, just a different perspective as well as dealing with, you know, grieving families at their worst time for some scenarios, for some cases and things like that. So just open up for discussion, any questions? Happy to entertain questions and thoughts.
For anyone who might be listening or might not know, so we did pass it only six months ago where we said only residents can be buried unless they had prior purchased up a plot. But in the last couple of, maybe just the last month even, we've had, I think, three inquiries where people have said, hey, my parent used to live in Kaseville, they always planned on being buried in Kaseville and now we're being told that they can't be. And it's a really, it's a traumatic, really sad time. And so I did have the opportunity to talk to some of these families. And so in doing this, I appreciate you presenting this, Cole. We just wanted to see if there's an appetite for a path forward for someone who absolutely wants to be buried in our cemetery. The, I think there's some problems with perhaps the former resident proving that in a time of distress. I mean, they're going to dig through their old files, maybe, I mean, that's just a difficult thing. So I guess I would be supportive of option three. And then if people really did want their loved one to be buried in the cemetery, they have a path forward to do that.
Yeah.
I don't think very many people maybe will take us up on that, but at least there's an option. Because currently in the ordinance that we just passed, we just said no. And, you know, for good reasons, like you've explained. So that's, we just want to see where we're at as a council and if we want to move forward or leave it.
If I may, Mayor, just add one comment to that. We already do have some exceptions for a resident. If you were a resident of Kaseville and you left Kaseville to live in an assisted living facility or to be, you don't, because you couldn't care for yourself anymore, those are already covered as a resident. So those issues are already factored into the current policy and ordinance. And so this just strictly deals with a pure, a pure non-resident that... Whether you lived in Kaseville for six months, 50 years ago, or you're still a non-resident. So that's what option three kind of...
It's hard, you have like a member of the Morgan family who's the, you know, generations are buried at Kaseville, but one of them has moved and raised their family and done everything in Salt Lake but plans to be buried in Kaseville but didn't buy a plot prior to our shutting it down. Well, it's, that is difficult to say to them, like, oh, you can't be buried in the same cemetery as all of your family is being buried just because you moved to, you know, Kaseville. It'd be same for my parents, my parents, you know, their whole family is in... Anyway, so I guess, yeah, that's where it becomes difficult. I like the idea of saying, you know, longer than X amount of years only because then that, like, you know, anybody who was raised here would have the opportunity to be able to do that. But as Mayor said, it might be hard to prove.
I guess my question, you know, we had a long discussion just six months ago. And remind me, because I think we talked about it, how long do we believe we can go on with our current rates?
So if, back when we made the changes, if we didn't change anything and just kept the status quo, didn't do anything, we projected anywhere from 10 to 15 years, we would be completely...
Yeah, it's not very long.
Sold out. And so there's a difference between when we call sold out versus being occupied.
Right.
We'll be years and years for, you know, I don't like to use the term for occupancy, but that's kind of what we, in the vernacular is, is the cemetery will be occupied. So by changing this and going to option one, we projected it to be closer to 40 years. As you know, in the current budget, we have our Memorial Garden area, which is designed for specifically cremation and urns. And so there is the possibility that that could even be elongated out, you know, with that. And if that does take off, there's other things in the cemetery that we've already looked in the future. If we went with option three and still kept the resident purchasing at need as well as the non-resident, we projected it'd be close to about 30 years if we did go with option three at need. Because we think the price will deter some people that have no connection to Kaseville. Those people that have a connection to Kaseville, it still allows them that path.
Yeah, what's the difference in price? What were we charging prior to that?
So what we were charging, so the current rate for a Kaseville resident to purchase the burial right is $800 and the interment fee is another $800 and that's at the time of...
So 1600.
$1,600 for a resident. The non-resident rate was, in total, was $2,600. And what we're proposing now, if option three is the direction we go, that non-resident rate for the burial space, the interment and then the perpetual care would be $8,400. Leighton Lindquist is $8,000 right now, just, you just went off the streets there. So that's why the fee is so high on option three.
We want to be higher because we don't want them to say, oh, well, it's cheaper.
So my question, then, you know, because 30 years is not that long.
No.
You know, I've lived here 16 now and it's like that. What about cremation? What if, what if you say, okay, you can't get buried here, but we, you know, we could, if you're going to do cremation, we can have a space there. What, how does that change things?
That certainly is something to consider.
Well, would you charge the same for cremation because of, I mean...
Cremation wouldn't anywhere near be the same just because of the space they're occupying.
This, I'm just talking space.
Yeah.
You know, that's the only thing I'm, you know...
Well, and we could do that if we had the cremation facility, which we don't yet.
Which we do, we should go to bid this fall with our first phase, which will...
That'll help.
We met with the architect or the engineers two weeks ago and so we should be out to bid. Our goal is to have that space, that first phase, open by Memorial Day so people can see what it looks like and hopefully, kind of mimicking what Provo City's done. They're actually on to their, they built their whole thing out and then they're actually expanding and making additional places. So it is becoming more accepted in the area. Nationally, the trend is cremations are about 60% versus 40%. We're complete opposite of that, we're about, Jackie, she's got the numbers memorized. I believe we do about 150, 160 a year, we do of interments, about 30 of those currently are cremation or urns.
But we don't have a place to put them?
They can put them in the lawn areas. The downside, the downside of that is it's just taking up valuable real estate that could be used for adult spaces. A lot of them are, entering them on top of other, as long as we have enough depth cover on top of an existing fault in the ground.
So I think maybe, maybe partially what he's saying is possibly it could right itself rather than us, like...
Yeah, I...
More and more people might do cremation, especially at the price of, I don't know, $8,400, maybe we go to nine.
Yeah, and we haven't priced out our cremations yet because we're waiting for it to get, to get built and then we can...
They're not that expensive.
So...
I almost like the idea of going up a little more because $400 isn't much where we might be back here in a year or two and having the same conversation. So maybe nine even and I kind of like a hybrid of all three options, maybe, but...
I just thought we had a good discussion in February.
We did.
Well, we did.
And I mean, I hate to say sob story, I just lost my mother, so I understand, you know, that it's, we're here for, we changed it for reasons.
Yeah. My preferred option would be to stick where we are because we've only been six months. Visited in a year from now, but I'm totally open to the direction of the council.
And I would say visit it once you have the cremation up and running. Because then maybe you could figure out, here's what we can do in lieu of, and here's, when you're talking space options, we have a better idea.
Yeah, that's certainly...
Well, I mean, yes, for sure, we haven't had this in place for long. But in talking to, I mean, and maybe I'm just being a little bit of a, really sensitive to it, in talking to people, I think it would be awesome to have some sort of path forward if, if in the extreme event, they really had their hearts set on being here. And I'm completely okay and comfortable with it being a really high mount to try to dissuade people. I mean, and for, and we do have future property that we could expand to, that the city owns. So it's not as though, we do have some options, we don't have it funded yet, you know. So it's not an mortuary, but we do have space that we could eventually grow into.
Yeah, start selling them for nine grand a pop.
I agree with you, Mayor. I think we should have some sort of flexibility, but still kind of a strict approach to it. We can always change it in the future, near future, but I don't see any reason to keep it as strict as it's been, so...
I mean, it hasn't been that long, for sure, but still.
Considering the fact that we have a couple of examples already that have come to us, so...
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
Okay, sorry, I'm taking the conversation back a little bit, but I just had a couple of questions. For the second option, I'm just thinking about it, how do they verify 10 years? I mean, there was a list of things, does the county keep records like that?
Not that we're aware of and that's where we get option two, it becomes so complex. Is Farmington City, what they do is they put the burden on the family that's coming in to prove that they have, they had a residency in the city for a period of time.
Okay.
But the challenge is, is you're dealing with... But the, the challenge is, is you're dealing with, you know, past loved ones and it's, you know, emotions, and so what does that proof look like? I don't know. Is it a former tax bill, is it a former utility bill? And then what is the length of a former resident that gets that versus, is it five years, is it ten years, is it?
Right.
That's where it's just so arbitrary, it's hard to know where to go.
Or it was a temporary and they lived with their daughter for ten years, you know?
They ran it here for six months, back in nineteen ninety, and can prove that, does that give them former resident status? That's where it's really tricky.
So another question I had, in our current plan, will we allow people who've maybe gone to like a nursing home or something to come back? How long, I mean, cause you never know how long someone's gonna live out, I, I feel terrible talking about this, it feels so weird. You never know how long, you know, after someone moves to a nursing home, they're gonna live for, do we have a time limit on that? Or if, I mean, if they live for another ten years, are they still okay?
They're, they're still considered a resident, if they move from the city specifically for that purpose and intent. Now, if you moved from the city fifteen years ago, and, and it, it, some of it's, it's on, on your honor. You know, we have to, at some point, trust what the family's telling us that it is true. But most of the time, we haven't had any people that we feel like are abusing that. So, but yes, it could be multiple years, but there's no cap on time in an assisted living or even if, yeah.
Okay, so here's another question, what if they had to move, not to go to assisted living, but just because, say, their house had stairs and they bought a house that didn't have stairs? Does that count? Cause I worry about, I, cause we have a lot of people who've lived here and contributed for a long time.
That's another.
And then they leave and they're not in a rest home or, or whatever they're called now. And, and, but, I mean, they've lived here.
That, that's another, just one of those difficult, how do you, what's a valid, what's a valid purpose for moving from the city to still get that resident status? So.
Well, if we're currently doing on your honor, could we just do on your honor for saying that they lived here for a certain, I mean, or would that be too complicated as well?
No, because I'll, I, I don't.
You think a lot of people would just fudge it?
Yes. I don't, to be politically correct, there's a lot of people that will do certain things to, yeah, we're kinda a little bit jaded when people will lie and do things to get around a rule.
Issues, well, Jackie and I had several conversations about people going to the rest home with many of the same questions. So I think if we're gonna have a policy, we should have kind of a bright line policy. Because we've already dealt with some of those issues where, you know, they, they, they call and they say they've been in a rest home and, and for a nurse care skilled, skilled nursing facility. And we've generally taken them at their word. But occasionally we've had the spidey senses tingling, I guess, and so for the exact same concerns that Councilmember Hunt's raising, it is nice to have a bright line rule, it is nice to say, unfortunately, you have to prove this, like. And, and I mean, candidly, that's very easy to write. It, it comes, comes across sometimes a little heartless, but it's easy policy to write.
I guess my only comment would be is I, I'm with Perry, I remember a very lengthy discussion and concern about making sure our cemetery was available for our residents for many, many, many years. Especially where we allow somebody to go into a rest home or whatever and come back and they're a resident. They choose to leave, I mean, if they're a resident of Farmington or a resident of Centerville, at that point, they can buy a burial plot at resident fees. You know, I mean, I don't have any real.
Do you care though, would you care about being buried there if you ended up moving away?
If I ended up moving away, would I care if I got buried in the city I lived in?
Yeah.
Not at all.
Why would you?
I, I don't.
I don't know.
I wouldn't care.
I think you'd wanna be with your family and buy a.
I think the, the, the family that's left cares, but I'm not sure.
You know, it's kind of a business thing, I'm sure you guys, when you're dealing with it, it's at the heartstrings part of it.
Yeah, it is.
But this is, when we dealt with it, it was at a business thing, and as far as I know, we've only had two people, three?
We've had three.
Two or three, yeah.
Three people since we did it.
And that's in the last six months, so, I mean, it's only a six months for sure, but that's three people.
I don't know, I don't, I definitely don't like option two. I mean, that is, to me is dangerous, option two, trying to figure out.
And if you did option three, I'd at least double what you have in there right now, make it painful.
Yeah, yeah, you give them a path, but sure.
But I, you know, I, I prefer to keep what we have right now, but, you know. Because these folks that left, they could have bought us, they could have purchased a spot, right?
Well, no, we did end that.
We, we ended that about
Two years ago?
Cause we had this massive, with COVID, we had a massive rush, like it was insane.
Okay.
So at that point, we put it at need. The, the policies evolved over the course of my whole time here. It used to be, back in the day, you could come in and buy, we had a family that bought sixty spaces up there. And we're like, whoa, this is way, this is wrong that you're buying that. So then we changed it to four, and then our latest is two, you can buy two spaces at need. And at need is means the, the time that you need to, to use the space. That's really helped slow down the selling pace, cause that's really what the, the key is, is how fast are we gonna sell out? And it's not, we're not really worried about how fast are we gonna be occupied, cause that's gonna be, that's how fast do we sell out? Because, yes, we do have ten acres further up Crestwood, but that just compounds it, it's a whole nother issue, operating two cemeteries and just the development cost for another cemetery with all that's, you know, in the millions. And so it's just, how long can we get this life of the existing twenty-two acres we have into the future? So that's, but we're happy to, you know, if option three is, kinda, we can go and play with that and come back again and kinda refine that.
So as we've been talking, I've been kind of all over the place a little bit. My first thought was like, Councilmember Oaks, let's just charge three times as much for that. But then, thinking about it a little bit, I realized you just don't wanna do that, and we wanna be somewhat reasonable. And so I propose we do option three, but change the burial right purchase from fifty-six hundred to sixty-two hundred. And then that would put it at an even nine thousand with all the other fees.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Do we have enough, so it's work item. Stop, pull it, I guess, just to kinda, yeah, if, if you guys don't wanna do it, fine, if you, if you have an appetite to maybe look at an option three or option two, we just need to know, so.
I think I'd rather wait, I, I am not completely opposed to option three, but I get a little, I, I understand the rationale for raising the price so much for non-residents, and to an extent, I agree with it. But it's difficult to be up here and be like, well, if you wanna be buried and you don't live here, then you have to be really wealthy in order to, in order to buy it, as opposed to, you know, and so I would rather just leave it the way it is and then continue to see how many we even get, you know? In, in, like, you know, like Perry and Mike were saying, you know, in the next six months. I know I originally was kind of thinking I was okay with option three, but it just feels, cause I mean, like we've talked about, this is a family's hardest time. And, and it is difficult to track down records, it took us forever to get my dad's military records, that was a nightmare. And so I can't imagine people wanting to get that and prove that they were here, and, and so option two doesn't really work. And I just think, I don't know, I'd rather sit on option one for a little bit longer than, than go to option three after six months.
So I don't understand your rationale though, like you're saying that option three's a no-go for you because of the wealth thing, but.
Well, that's not the only reason, it's not, but that's definitely part of it, and I think the other part is just that it's, there doesn't seem to be a huge demand if we've only had three in six months. I'd rather have like a fair, enforceable, I don't know, thing, maybe I'm not making sense, but I'd rather have one standard that's fair and enforceable, and then come up with something from there.
Can I just add real quick, sorry, I think number one is very fair and enforceable, but number three just adds some flexibility in rare circumstances.
And revenue.
For the most people, they're gonna fall under the option, they're residents, so.
Is the revenue important at all? I mean, I would think the revenue, like, three times, three times nine.
Yeah, revenue is always a, a factor, cause you know, the cemetery, we're not in it to, we're not a private, so we're not in it to.
But twenty-seven grand is twenty-seven grand.
It's considerable, yeah.
But it's, it's more about, we're running out.
Yeah, and just to give you some perspective, so when we had the policy before and it was at need for resident, non-resident, again, our fees weren't anywhere near where they are, but the at need, it was about fifty, fifty, fifty. Fifty percent were resident, fifty percent were non-resident. So that was before, when the fee was higher, but it wasn't anywhere near, it was about the three thousand dollar mark. And it was still fifty, fifty as far as.
And how many, and how many a year we have?
That's where the, what's that?
And how many a year, we'd have a hundred and forty about a year?
So it ebbs and flows. Our highest peak is we were selling about three hundred and eighty spaces, which is, is a lot. We have about three thousand spaces roughly for adult spaces, and these spaces are forty inches wide by, you know, eight, nine feet long.
We had three hundred and eighty at needs during one year?
No, that was, that was previous.
No, 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 I'm saying like the at need amount.
The at need amount, I think, was just about, right around a hundred.
A hundred?
And fifty, and fifty percent of that was resident, fifty percent was.
So fifty times nine thousand would be four hundred and fifty grand. If in fact those numbers stayed the same and the people were willing to pay the nine grand. I mean, that, that could add up, over ten years, we could pay, pay to get that other piece of property ready and.
It could add up, well, and, and it might have been three inquiries, but I, in my understanding of the three inquiries were, this is one of two parents. So then it would be likely that the other parent would perhaps want to also be buried next to their spouse at some point in the future. And so, yeah, it might be three inquiry, I don't know, I ju, I just think it's a big enough deal to families that it would be nice to have a path forward. Just give them an option, if they wanna take it, they can, if they don't want to, that's great. But at least it gives them an opportunity to opt into that if they choose to. And, and like Mike, or John's, you know, there, there's a little bit of revenue there as well, but.
And what we don't wanna do is keep flip-flopping from one policy to another policy to another policy and.
Yeah, I, I understand, I just can't imagine that this will not ever come up again. I, I think it will increase, so.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, if you're willing to entertain it. I guess it's not a motion, it's a work item, huh? Or do we still make a motion?
Wouldn't we have to move it to action?
I do have one quick, I do have one quick question though, what you just said, Mayor. So this scenario where the family came, was one of, one of the spouses, were they already passed?
Um, I think they were not.
Okay, so it wasn't like a situation where one was already buried, they wanted a plot next to it?
I, I don't think so, I think it was, my parents want to be, it was mostly that.
Yeah, and, and if the spouse, if his spouse and everyone else is currently buried in the cemetery, most likely they already have a space. So, and as long as they already have the space, they're already treated. They, they would just pay the non-resident interment fee at that point. Yeah, so we're just at the, just looking for direction on how you would like us to proceed.
Mayor, I'd make a motion, I'll make a motion that we give direction to actually work at option three with a fee of nine thousand dollars.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Uh, well, I mean, I'll tell you what it is, and then you can decide if you wanna.
Oh, that's a good.
Just that we move it to an action item and look at it again, is that what you were already moving anyways?
Yeah, yeah, that would be my motion, that we, that it would move to an action item, that, that the direction would be that we look at that as an action item.
Okay, that sounds good. Oh, I'll second.
Oh, awesome.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Cole. All right, Council, do we have any reports, anything to report?
No.
No?
I have one, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Hunt.
Okay, so, um, the, I don't, is it the, the, gosh, the, the Legion, the, I don't remember what they're called, the Legion, the Camen Do, the Memorial Day, yeah, the American Legion. They're having, and I'm sure they would want us to say that they're having their post-twenty-seven flag retirement ceremony on Friday, September fifth, at the Layton Fire Training Center. I don't have a time for that, but I think you can probably Google it if you're interested in going. And that kind of segues into what I also wanted to talk and kind of piggyback on what Mike was saying earlier about those fallen officers from northern Utah and just, I guess, it's not really an announcement, but an update, but just, yeah, express my appreciation for what our police officers go through. I mean, even to get into doing the job, they have to get pepper sprayed and tased. And they were telling me, when you get pepper sprayed and you shower, it comes back out of your hair and onto you again, and so it's, and, and of course, you know, that's, of course, minimal compared to, you know, the, the final sacrifice that, that they're all willing to make, but.
Councilmember Hunt just got, Councilmember Hunt just offered herself up to be tased.
Yeah, she was tased, there's video, she's very brave.
There is video evidence, if you wanna see it, on my Facebook page, but I just wanted to bring it up because I, you know, like Councilmember Blackham was saying, I appreciate the sacrifices of our military and, and our, and our police officers, so just keep them in your hearts and your prayers.
Thanks. Anyone else? No, okay, Jason?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to let everyone know that we've had two more of our paramedics deployed for Wildland Fire. We deployed the paramedics and, and ambulance, and that'll be for the next ten, or actually next two weeks. And that's up at the, in Montana at the Knowles Fire, so. This is, I think, was a good, good thing, a win-win, we're able to provide a service, but also there's a nice compensation as well. Just as a reminder, when we deployed down to the Monroe Fire in south central Utah a couple of weeks back, we netted twenty-nine thousand dollars after the payment from the Department of Public Safety, so. But we're gonna continue to do that, it's, it's a, again, a good opportunity to get some revenue, but also provide a service that's really needed. Also, just a note that we had a, a great small area plan, Charette, I guess, a couple of days ago, with our consultants, GSBS, and just kinda looked at the survey data and kind of identified some of the overriding themes that we, that have been picked up over the survey. They had a really great participation in that survey, several hundred have responded, which is, which is really good. And there's, we're gonna be, they're gonna be scheduling a, an open house in early September, so that's to come, and just kinda share the data that's been gathered so far and just kinda put out a draft vision statement and things like that, so look for that.
Isn't it scheduled for September ninth?
It's, I don't know if that's finalized yet, but yes, September ninth is what, what they're planning right now. And then just a quick congratulations or hat, hats off to Public Works and the contractors that have been working on the Mutton Hollow, Main Street and Fairfield intersections, they got that done for the first week of school, which is great. It's been a great project, I think, heard a lot of good things about the contractor as well, we're really happy with the work and, and especially the Public Works keeping that project on track, and then same with Two Hundred North. There's been a, a number of different surprises, as you often find in construction. Everything from uncovering the old Bamberger rail line to sewer laterals that weren't in the right place, based on old maps that Central Davis had, and now an irrigation line that's causing some issues, and really, again, wanna acknowledge Public Works for keeping that project on track. They're still expecting to have that paved and open, pretty much done, except for the landscaping by Thanksgiving, so it's great. Uh, that'll be phase one, of course, from Main Street up to Five Hundred East. And then, well, I see Cole's in the audience, but the gymnasium project is still on track, I know Cole's meeting regularly with the architects in the school district, and I believe Cole, that's still on track to have the design done by November, October, even?
End of October.
End of October, perfect, at which time they'll go out to bid, and still the plan is that that'll be open about two years from now, right? Late twenty-seven?
Yeah, summer twenty-seven.
So excited about that, that's exciting to see moving forward so well. Also, you know, obviously this is our first meeting since we've got past through the taxation, and we closed the, the chapter on this budget year, but we're immediately starting up on some of the priorities that were, talked a lot about during the last budget cycle, those are obviously still out there and, and in need of discussion, and and, and those are primarily the, the fire station on the west side, what are we gonna do with that? What are we gonna do with the library building next door and the office center? And we're, we're gonna have a little bit of a strategic planning session with, with the department heads in a couple of weeks to look at the last strategic planning meeting and then circle back to council like we said we would do, kinda taking some of the input we got from you at that last strategic planning session, and then continuing to build off of that, and especially as we kind of prepare for the next budget cycle, that we wanna be prepared to know the direction we're going. And I'll share my thoughts on, on those three things, those three major projects, in no particular order, but the fire station. Um, and I'll share my thoughts on, on those three things, those three major projects, um, in no particular order, but the fire station, um, I think we've always recognized that that is going to be in need at some point. It's just a matter of when. Uh, and it obviously with the growing number of residents on the west side and the, uh, we all, we know that we're not meeting national standards on, on response times there. Um, we're gonna talk a lot about that, but I think where that's probably gonna go is that is a major dollar amount. Um, it's not so much the cost of the building, but it's the one and a half million dollars a year to operate that building. That's probably the big, the big thing. And, uh, residents should be educated, invested in that decision, um, I think. And, uh, the, the plan that I would recommend and that we're gonna talk more about is just, let's, let's put that out to a vote. Let the residents decide, put it on a GO bond, uh, issue for next year. Uh, that'd be November of twenty-twenty-six. And, uh, obviously a lot of education needs to happen both within the city, but with, with residents as well, so they understand what they're voting on and, and let them decide if it's important enough at this point. Um, same thing with the library. Uh, we've gone through several iterations of public-private partnerships. Um, and I think that's run its course. I, where we are right now is, uh, to, to really save that building is going to, in my opinion, take a public, public dollars to do something. Um, we have engaged with, uh, one of the architects that we've worked with in the past, Kathy Whedon. She was with Sierra Sage. She's now with, uh, uh, another firm. And they are right now giving us, uh, kind of some free services to look at some options on a very high level. We've always had some pretty good numbers, I think, on what it'd take to preserve the building. We've done a number of studies and engineering, uh, work on that, but there's other options we've been told about such as tear, tear the building down, put up the old rock on the new building and according to some people, that would save a lot of money. Another option, of course, is just to tear the building down and, and, and do a nice kind of public area, public plaza or pocket park. And, uh, what we don't have though is real estimates on those other options. And so that's what Kathy is helping us with right now. Again, free of charge right now, uh, just talking with some contractors and giving us some kind of order of magnitude numbers on those that can facilitate, excuse me, facilitate a discussion on where we go next. Um, she's also looking at some grant money, which is great. We don't know if there's a lot out there, but she's exploring that. Um, so more to come on that as well. And then last is the operations center. Uh, I put this in an email the other, uh, couple of weeks ago, but, uh, we know that that's a need. We've outgrown that space. It's outdated. We're, we've got some compliance issues. And, and one that recently came up was the Fuel Island that's been out there for, uh, the last thirty-something years. Um, the state has come down and said, we have until July of twenty-twenty-six to bring that into compliance. And we, we're not sure exactly what that means. I mean, obviously there are some clear violations. The underground pipes that connect the, uh, the pumps to the tanks are a violation. Um, and, uh, Cole and, uh, well, both Coles kind of, our mechanic and, and, uh, Cole Stevens here, set up a meeting today where we met with the Department of Environmental Quality that enforces that. And we kind of did some brainstorming with them as to the best ways that we can comply without, you know, spending a lot of money. We don't want to spend, uh, more than we have to, obviously. So we're, we're gonna come up with some, uh, proposal there, bring that back to Council. We should be getting some quotes here in the next couple of weeks on some options. And, uh, I think what that indicates though is, again, there's a number of issues out there that, uh, do need to be addressed. I think that'll be one of the major issues that we focus on in the coming year. So what, what the plan's going to be uh, with the Fuel Island, but also with the covered storage needs and some of the other needs that we have out there. So just wanted to keep that on the radar, but again, that's kind of, gonna be a big part of the agenda in the next few months as we get back into strategic planning and kind of set the, lay the groundwork for, uh, for the next budget year. And, um, that's pretty much all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Jason. Okay, appreciate you. All right. Someone wanted to make a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone. Thanks, guys.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you.